Good evening. Welcome to the June 13th, 2022 Anacortes City Council Meeting. Mr. Franciac, would you please take the role? Mr. Carter?
Present.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters. Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Ms. Mr. McDougal. Ms. Hubick? Would you all please join me in the pledge? A couple of quick announcements from me. A quick COVID report. Seven-day case average is up 3%, but that's back till the 4th of June. And the interesting stat, 15% increase in hospitalizations, but then with our hospital, there's a 100% decrease because it went from two to one. So again, we're small number adjustments which make big percentage number changes. And then I'm going to do a quick read of a nice letter we got from the Department of Ecology because sometimes we don't always get nice letters from the Department of Ecology. But congratulations. The Anacortes Water Treatment Plan is receiving the 2021 Wastewater Treatment Plan Outstanding Performance of World. Approximately 300 wastewater treatment plants statewide. Yours is one of 124, top performance in 2021. Plan is a top performer for regularly meeting numeric effluent limits and permit criteria for conducting and monitoring and reporting data. Turning wastewater into water clean enough to discharge in the waterways takes efficient process to control, skill, teamwork, and good judgment. Ecology appreciates the extraordinary level of effort your plant operators demonstrated throughout 2021. And if you've forgotten, we're one of only four or five plants that still has in the entire state that has an incinerator. So again, I think it's nice to get good news from the Department of Ecology there.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
I move to excuse Mr. Walters and Mr. McDougal from this evening's meeting.
Second? Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young to excuse Mr. McDougal and Mr. Walters. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're over to announcements and committee reports from Council. 3A Housing Affordability Community Services Committee. Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Thank you. We actually did not have a Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee meeting this last week, so there's nothing to report, but we did have a planning committee which was is up next. And we just had it at 5:00 today and finished up right before this meeting. It was nice to have us all together and, you know, we kind of just did some updating on various projects that will be coming before that have been of concern. One is the Skyline Cell Tower. We've gotten a number of emails and concerns and questions about it, about a monopole that is going to be going near one of the boat storage buildings. Just for the public to know, the comment period ends June 15th, and it is allowed in the marine mixed use, this type of cellular pole with a wireless service permit, but it is subject to CEPA review, and it's a Level 1 review, which means as a director decision, he will provide a detailed summary of his decision. So if you do have concerns or you haven't gotten your comments in, please do that by June 15th. They've been the planning department has been going through those comments as they come in. So the other thing we kind of talked about was we kind of in line with this, but a little different. Mr. Walters brought up the fact that we haven't had a report from the planning director about our use of departures when it comes to our development regulations, so hoping to see that in the near future. And then finally, we did a little bit of more talk about the Shoreline Master Plan, which will be coming back forward for us all to review. We were discussing somewhat of the overwater peers and looking at kind of case studies because that was requested the last time it came before council. That is about it.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to 3C Public Safety Committee Meeting. Mayor Miller? Mr. Carter?
There's not much over on the Police Department side, but everyone that was just recently promoted, they're getting trained up in their new positions. And we also have one graduating the academy, I believe it's this week. Over on the Fire Department side, our new slash old boat is up and running, and everyone's getting trained up on that, and they're planning on having it out on the water for the 4th of July. And they're working on interlocal with the port to work on some kind of morgue agreement on where to store it. The Critical Area Survey for Station 3 is complete, and they're looking in the future for five or 10 years down the road on how to build out, possibly setting it up for possible extensions or growth in that area, and looking at possibly partnering with other fire departments, like Station 1 over in Skagit for that station. And also, the Fire Department had just put in for training with the Integrated Emergency Course put on by FEMA. It's where they kind of evaluate the city for strengths and downfalls and disasters and where the city could benefit and the Fire Department can go.
Yeah, I think we're hoping to get the final report to council, I think, August for the Fire Station 3. I think the good news piece of information is the land. There's enough land there to, if we so choose to build, to build a station and a training facility because we're concerned about some wetland impacts there. Okay, 3D Port City Liaison Committee.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubick?
Thank you. So we spent a good chunk of our time in the Port City meeting doing a look ahead about the Maritime Strategic Plan, so a document that's been worked on, looking at the goals for the next two years, which include things like working on the Gwemyss Channel Trail, continuing work with the MJB property, having the city partner with the port and NMTA to figure out what we want to do around legislation related to things like copper bottom paint. There were also discussions had around expanding on the economic development part of the comprehensive plan. One of the things that we found out is that there are a lot of businesses and a lot of people in town that like to ask questions and do surveys, and so instead of reinventing the wheel, how can we look at what's been done, expand upon it, kind of go over things that have been asked already. What do we think has been impacted by COVID? What can we ask in a different way? And how can we move forward with that? So we're going to be working on that over the next foreseeable future. And then we had Jessica Kaiser from the Chamber join us, John Sternlicht join us from E-Ask. And one little interesting note that I took away from it, and I put it in bold in my notes, more than 90% of job growth is from existing businesses. So just remember that when you hear about maybe 100 new jobs that have been brought to Anacortes, most of that is from businesses that are already here.
Great, thank you. Any other council reports, committee reports? Okay, we're on to item number four, which is public comment. I don't know if we had a sign-up sheet. I see a few folks here. I've got five attendees, four attendees online. Any this is the opportunity for any member of the public to address the City Council on any items that are not on the agenda. And I've got one raised hands, and it looks like Rochelle Kalua. So I need some technical help to let her address the council, and I think that comes from upstairs. All right. I can't hear you if you're but you're cleared to.
I am having trouble unmuting the microphone, so give me just one moment, please. And Rochelle, stay tuned, I'll get you unmuted, just one moment.
And typically, we limit the time to three minutes, but we won't start the timer until you actually get to start talking. Make sure there's nothing I'm doing here.
I'm still having some trouble, so if there's anyone in person who'd like to speak, I'll continue to troubleshoot.
Sorry about that, Rochelle. We'll try to work that out. Any members of the public would like to, okay, I think we got somebody coming up. And if you just state your name and where you live, and go for it.
Hi, good evening. My name's Anastasia Brensic, and I live in Anacortes. And I wanted to thank the council, the Safety Committee, for being so quick to respond to some information that came to us late last night about some folks who want to come to the Pride Parade, and basically, there was some death threats. So I appreciate the Safety Committee being so quick to respond, to work with the Anacortes Police Department to help us navigate a beautiful, wonderful experience that we'll be having on Saturday and making sure that all of our community is safe. I do want to highlight that there is an RCW 9A.84 that talks about a person like this guilty of a crime acting with three or more other persons. They do have a group of people, and I hear that there's a whole nother report of people coming from up the river that want to come and participate in this hate. So I just want to say that rather than, so I know those might be saying, then you shouldn't have a Pride Parade. Don't make that kind of wild change here. Let's keep us quiet and keep us protected. Rather than going that route, I'm really hoping that you'll stand up with us and say, all of us are celebrating together, and we're not going to let hate and violence be what dictates who we are as a community. This is my family that's on the line, my two children in the back making noise always. My wife is here, and I just want to say thank you for even standing up the way you have been. Thank you.
Thank you. And anytime there's talk of threats, I take it very seriously. As the chief law enforcement officer in the city, I always say anytime there's any activities, everyone has the right to peaceably assemble, but if you break things or hurt people, you're going to get arrested. So we will make sure everyone is safe. All right, any chance we were able to get the online issue resolved?
Yes, Rochelle, you should be able to speak now, and I apologize for the trouble.
No, we got it. Thank you.
Okay, so can you guys hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. So I would just like to thank City Council for all of you being so brave and standing up for this town and showing what true leadership was by signing a resolution making June Pride Month in Anacortes. I am reminded more than ever why it is so important that we continue to fight for equal rights for every human. Today, many members of the Anacortes Pride Board and the queer community as a whole were made aware of the fact that we have been targeted with death threats for trying to celebrate those who fought before us, those who will continue to fight, and those celebrating every person for their individuality and contribution to our collective society. I keep trying to gather my thoughts. And Mayor Miller, I understand the amount of victimization you claim because you were a victim of a childish prank, and you have so and because of that, you have punished an entire community. But I think everyone should agree, death threats are not to be taken lightly and should be taken for what they are. You need to let go of your pettiness and show real leadership. I don't think it's a coincidence that white nationalists are targeting Anacortes. I think they are targeting every marginalized community in this town because of a strong lack of leadership coming from our mayor. If you don't openly stand up for every member of your community, people seem to interpret that as if we're okay with hate in this town. So we will keep on being welcoming and getting attention of the homophobic, transphobic, anti-Semitic, racist bigots who think we're a welcoming town to hatred. I am going to put a significant amount of this blame on you, Mayor Miller, and people can disagree with me, but you're the face of leadership in Anacortes. And because of your refusal to stand up against hate in this town, you're creating an open invitation to violent extremists. And I beg you to show real leadership and show everyone in Anacortes, we will not tolerate this hate. Please stand with our local LGBTQ+ community and every marginalized person. Stand strong against intolerance, Mayor Miller. We are Anacortes.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity to address the council and also, I guess, address the mayor, that's fine, too. All right, anybody else wish to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? All right, we're moving on to our consent agenda. Oh, sorry, oh, very sorry. Okay, thank you. I was heads down looking on the online. Make sure the mic is on, the blue light there.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening. I'm Kiko McCracken. I'm a longtime resident of Anacortes, and I wasn't going to speak tonight, but then I decided I was. So thank you, thanks all of you for your service and the dedication, the hours you spend just thinking about the well-being of our city and what is best for our future, and particularly what is best for children. I am the Gender Inclusive Schools Coordinator for the Anacortes School District. That is a role that is mandated by Washington State for all public schools, and it is a recognition that students within the transgender, non-binary community are the most targeted and suffer the greatest adverse outcomes of all students, and particularly students of color who are trans and non-binary. It's almost predictable outcomes for them. And so our role as educators, your role as public servants, is to really, you know, change that narrative. So thank you for all efforts that you are making, and in particular, I appreciate Mayor Miller, the statement about that you take public safety very, very seriously. And I know that this Saturday is going to be a wonderful event for everyone. I hope that you all will be there and see that community, but in particular, how important it is for the children to see that, to see the public leaders there and educators there, and to know that you stand with them and that you're protecting them from harmful outcomes. So that's all I wanted to say, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, couple other hands raised.
Well, to echo Kiko, I wasn't planning on speaking in yet, here I am. I'm Shelley Brensic Higman, I'm Anastasia's wife. Those are my kids making noise in the back. And like some other folks have said previously, I want to echo thank you for your leadership. Thank you for making this happen. There have been some comments in this chamber regarding this not being necessary. Perhaps we've already arrived because Councilmember Young is in the room. Perhaps we don't need a Pride Parade because we are a significant minority. And I've been in this fight for a long time. I was outed at 16, I've been an activist for 35 years, and I have to say, I'm pretty floored to hear exactly the same arguments against our community as I was hearing then in rural eastern Washington. I find that fairly depressing. However, I would never have been able to address the council in that place and that time, so there has indeed been progress. But I would like to caution us all in the face of this object lesson that we have just had where my wife and the mother of my two young children has received a credible death threat from a known problem individual near to us in our community, where 31 people were recently arrested in conjunction with an assault, a planned assault on a Pride Parade in Idaho. That when we throw words around that disparage members of our community, when we tolerate speech that dehumanizes anyone, we throw gasoline on a fire that exists in this country and it exists in our community. I'm sorry that we're seeing that again. And again, I want to thank you for standing with us in this time, and I want to caution us all to call each other on speech that causes these people to feel they have some ground to stand on. This is my life. This is my family. This is our community. And I, for one, love it here. But we need to fight to save what's great about this place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, want to make sure I don't miss anybody else. All right, now, moving on to our consent agenda, items A through F, and you see there are two minutes on there, we had some minor corrections there, so thank you for those. And consent agenda, council.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right, the motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Carter to approve consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're on to other business, item 6A, and I think we're going to hear from Mr. Lunsford, maybe, maybe chime in from Mr. Hoagland, but we'll see. You're on, Mr. Lunsford.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, the audience. Test my technical skills. Uh-oh, spoke too soon. Fantastic. Okay, thank you for your patience. So tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the skate park improvement project that we've been talking about for a little while. We have the goal to raise $850,000 to $900,000 to improve the skate park. Donations to date from private sources, we received half a million dollars from an anonymous donor. That kind of that puts some real life into it, usually does, half a million dollars. And then we received another generous donation of $100,000, pretty impressive, from the Anacortes, the Quantis Club of Anacortes via the Parks Foundation, so we're grateful for that. And then, community donations came in through our partners at Trinity Skate and the Skate Park Improvement Project, Rachel Muntin and her group totaling $50,000. So we're doing great. $650,000 is fantastic, and a new skate park is still expensive. So I'm here to ask you all to consider an additional $100,000 in REIT funds, and that would go to helping us get closer to our goal. The city obviously has skin in the game because it's a city park. City staff is working on this, legal staff, finance staff, engineering staff, park staff. So we do have skin in the game, but the cash would help us to move this along a little further and encourage folks in the community to see that we are fully invested and to make donations along the lines of what we're asking for, and I'll show you in my next slide. So if we were to get this amount, it'd bring us to 750,000, very close to our goals. And this is a concept drawing that our partners at Grind Line have created. And if you all remember Storvik Park, the Our Town, Our Park that was developed there with community involvement in the building of that, and families, community organizations, businesses, faith communities donated to fund features in that park. You know, give us $20,000 for a swing set, $5,000 for a slide, what have you. So we do a similar concept here, so naming rights, if you will, to still be the Ben Rue Memorial Skate Park and Alice Parchman Newland Park, but they would have the chance to name things that you can see over that, you know, people with more supple bones and carcass than I have can jump over and survive. So the boat in the middle that they would jump over, or some of the features, the bowels and features on the side or the rails, those would all have naming rights that families or organizations could donate towards to get us closer to our goal of 850 to 900,000. So that's what we'd be doing in the months ahead as we finish the drawings with Grind Line. So Bob Vogts and our staff is the project manager, and be working with Rachel Muntin and Grind Line to continue that project. So that's our desire. The ask for you tonight to consider is to instruct staff to add 100,000 in REIT funds for the skate park to the second quarter budget amendment that would come to probably next month, if I understand Mr. Hoagland correctly. So you'd have a budget amendment that would come to you then. So I don't know if I need a, you can, of course, make a motion, you can give me the council head nod to direct staff to do that, however you'd like to do.
I'm comfortable the official action will be when you approve the budget amendment, but I'd be looking for a head nod. But first of all, any discussion, any questions, comments, council? Ms. Moulton?
Thanks. I think this is a great idea for the city to contribute to things that I believe will include some of the infrastructure, some of the stormwater improvements and things like that. Is that correct?
Right, we would just would go into a large pot, it could go to the cooler things as well. It could go to some of the things that people don't want to fund, but we want to be cool as well and give to the things that kids are going to skate on. So it would just go into the general pot, but yes.
Okay, great. Well, I would say that the size of the donations and the enthusiasm of the community and what a positive amenity and beyond amenity it's going to be for our kids and our big kids, I fully support, I fully support this.
Yeah, and I think the staff is being really conscious of tying this in with a potential community center and the whole redevelopment of that area. So anyway, any other comments or head nods that this is okay to? I'm looking for, so, and, okay, Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, I would agree. I think it's really easy to say absolutely we should support $100,000 when there's been so much community support building up to this. My one question was this pump track. Does is that part of that 850 to a million, or would that be in an above and beyond that estimate? Because I think that sounds like a really awesome addition, too.
Right, no, great question. Thank you for that, Ms. Cleland McGrath. So we added the pump track kind of as a placeholder from the discussions that some of you may have either watched or were a part of here with the skating and bicycling community. And so I think that we are going to get those drawings and estimates from Grind Line, and they're going to tell us what we think we can afford. And if money comes in closer to 900,000, perhaps we can afford the pump track as part of, our goal is to add that, whether it's in a Phase 2, we just don't know. So our commitment is to build a new skate park, that's what we've talked to the donors about. We would love to add the pump track as the concept drawings were shown when we met, and that would be certainly a part of Phase 1 if we can afford it. That's our goal.
Mayor Miller? Mr. Young?
Mr. Lunsford, would you, what is a pump track?
A pump track is like a circle or oval with various dipsy doodles, if you will. I'm sure there's official names, but that's what you do. And you can ride a little bit, and then you use your body to kind of move the bike and pump, and then it's high cardio, which is why I don't do it. And you can do the things that you need to do and have the skill challenges that you have on it. This would be made of concrete and not dirt or asphalt like other places are. You could skate it, you could ride it, you could scooter it, and that's what the features, usually for bicycles, it's more of a bicycle track, but it can be used by any of the wheeled users.
It's always a great learning experience at council, isn't it?
No, that one, I know Ms. Moulton could correct me if I'm wrong on the pump track thing, but typically, it's for bicycles, but I'm certain you could use a skateboard on it as well. But I think it'll be a nice, nice add, and hopefully a donor, if we can't reach it, will fill in the gap there. Any other questions for Mr. Lunsford? How about, so the head nod, Ms. Hubick for, okay, so we'll plan on bringing that when we bring the second quarter update to the budget, that you can expect to see that in there. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to item 6B, which is Ordinance 4021, amending Title VI AMC regarding animals, discussion and possible action. I know we've discussed it, I think we want to make sure that we've captured all of council's comments and concerns. So Ms. Swetnam, you are on. If I gave you enough time to pull up puppy pictures.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. I am sorry to say I have no dog pictures for you tonight, but I'm happy to email you some on the off time.
Great, thank you.
So yes, Mayor mentioned, tonight we're bringing back Ordinance 4021, which amends Title VI, specifically the chapter regarding dangerous dogs. And thank you to council for the good discussion last week. From that discussion, there were two main issues that needed to be addressed. One was a question raised by Councilmember Walters, asking whether the city had a provision in its code to allow dangerous dogs who bite to allow dangerous dogs who bite to be confiscated and tested for rabies. And in fact, we do have a section that provides for that. It says 608140. So if a dangerous dog does bite, it's confiscated by the animal control officer, held in quarantine. And then the animal control officer is empowered to make a decision about whether the dog needs to be humanely euthanized if it, if it in fact does have rabies. So we, I think we've got that piece in place already, so there isn't a change reflected in the draft in your packet regarding that issue. The other point that did get addressed was just more of a formatting adjustment that council member Walters suggested on the definition of provoked. Rather than having my long run on sentence that was originally in the, in the draft that was in last week's packet, the four items that are, that are elements of the definition of provoked are broken out as subsections. So no substantive changes and no other changes beyond that, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Swetnam? I did see there is an asterisk, any members of the public need to, want to comment on this? Okay, council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I would just like to say, this was a great presentation in lieu of no puppy pictures. But no, it, I really think that we addressed much of the issues that we had and thought in the discussion that we had prior to this. So really bringing this forward is a good thing and the right thing to do. And so short of any other comments, I'll, I move to adopt ordinance 4021 and ordinance amending chapter 6.08 of the Anacortes Municipal Code regarding dangerous dogs.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Carter to approve ordinance 4021. Mr. Francioc, would you please call for the vote, please? Mr. Young.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, thank you very much, nice job. Okay, if there, I have no other business before the council, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.